So, nobody from Education Minnesota is coming to present you?
You're welcome. You're welcome.
It's not, because it's like, well, it's barely.
It is four fifty-four.
Yeah, because it used to be three minutes slower, but the hour it's really not right. The minute, the hour hand.
Oh, the hour, okay. To me, the hour hand does point to one. The short one's the hour and the...
Long was the minutes, but the hour is really long and the minutes aren't right.
So, what is that, ten o'clock then?
It's not right minute-wise anyway.
Yeah, ten o'clock.
Now, that's a...
Who's phone is that?
I bet it's Judy's.
Judy, Judy, Judy.
Is Dan coming?
Never know what the boys are gonna do. They're boys.
Boys will be boys, as empty sounds.
What are we calling the new, the curriculum coaches? They're not curriculum coaches there. They're not, are we calling them teacher coaches?
Teacher coaches. Well, there's gonna be, here's the deal, there's gonna be one instructional coach, one literacy coach, and one student engagement coach. I would call them by their titles. And so far, we have three people that have applied.
Really?
Jody's applied for the literacy coach. Heidi's applied for the, uh... Either that or instructional. Ashley Kaplan has applied for the high school one. It's either Heidi or Ashley, I'm not sure which one. Ashley Kaplan has applied for the...
Oh, the one for next Tuesday?
Yeah.
I did see it.
They will, they will.
I mean, I work that day, so I can be there.
There's one high school teacher that went up the backfield.
Well, I look, I'll wait.
She's in Alaska, and this is her third year here, so it's...
I'll look here.
She's been here, she's taught here.
I think that's good.
I'm just saying, I think it should work.
I'm just saying.
It's just gonna be, just for that presentation, we have anything else?
They're fire plugs.
I'll, I'll put it down.
I'm kinda glad Liz called because I think she's got an offer possibly pending at MCW. So, you know, we're not sure, you know, let's just back you off. And the job's available in two weeks, we might come up here with a job. This Elizabeth Alsworth, who is at MCW.
Yeah, she's from MCW.
Right. She was one of the people that was selected Friday night. She just called because she might be offered a job at MCW. So, I told you...
So, what are we saying, we're just gonna take it off the agenda?
Right.
Or put it...
Just take it off the agenda.
Okay. Delete number five from your agenda.
From the amended, we're gonna amend the amendment. You can do that. It's called an amendment to the second degree.
Oh, that sounds serious.
Two more amendments and my provision is eight fifty, or five fifty-one tonight.
I'll make it in time to the boys' tense meeting.
The parent, tense on Saturday?
Yes, the parent meeting.
Oh, the parent meeting, thank you.
And there's orchestra class tonight?
Yes, seven o'clock.
Ready in two minutes?
Okay, we're ready. Come on, boys.
I just think it's ridiculous to come in no matter what for this.
Nope, a minute early. Do you want to remind people to speak into the mic?
Speaking to the mics?
Because the videographer is also live streaming this to the world on the world wide web, we want to remind everyone to speak directly into the microphone, but don't be nervous. No pressure.
It's not the speaking that's the problem, it's the camera.
It's the camera. Okay, Diane's here, Nicole's here, Julie's here, Dan is not here, Rufus is here, Danielle is here. My phone is off, here we go. I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna do that. I'm gonna talk about the high school offerings just on the newbies, but somebody needs to move that. Will you move that?
Danielle or Nicole?
Here we go.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is Tuesday, March twenty-second, two thousand sixteen. It's five PM, and this is a Fairmont area school board meeting. Our roll call this evening is, Dan Brookins is absent. Please stand with me with the, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, next on our, you should have a green agenda, but next on the agenda are the minutes from our last meeting, which was on March eighth of two thousand sixteen. Has everyone had a chance to review those? I'd entertain a motion to approve or amend them.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Rufus, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Nicole. A motion by Rufus, second by Nicole, to approve the March eighth, two thousand sixteen school board meeting minutes as printed. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then you should have the green agenda in front of you. We've had some additions and now I need to make a couple corrections to it. So, if you go to the employment, under personnel employment, we're going to delete number five from the agenda. And then on board committee reports, the CER advisory council meeting did not meet on March tenth. That meeting was canceled, so there will be no report for that. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve or not.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with those corrections.
Thank you, Julie, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Danielle. So, a motion by Julie, second by Danielle, to approve the March twenty-second, two thousand sixteen school board meeting agenda with the corrections noted. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then, the first fun thing on our agenda is the teacher of the year. We have here this tonight, and I'll invite her up to the microphone. And it's Mrs. Kate Collinblock, who's our band director at Fairmont High School. And she has been nominated as the teacher of the year for Fairmont Schools. And so, we congratulate you.
Thank you.
On this wonderful honor. So, are you gonna tell us a little bit about the process or what you've been up to since this nomination has come?
Well, once, once you've been chosen as the teacher of the year of your district, you have the option of going on to the state level, which I did. I am no longer going any further than that. I did not make it on to the, what, the semifinals, I think, or next, whatever that is. But you go through a very, it's quite a reflective process, actually, where you put in a lot of effort and time reflecting on actually different questions that they gave you. And I actually brought my portfolio with me.
So, you create a portfolio then?
You do. You create a portfolio, you get your picture taken, all that good stuff. You basically put together a transcript on yourself, and they ask you questions. They asked you to write essays on those questions. One of them being, what are your personal feelings and beliefs about teaching and how I demonstrate that in my teaching style? Another one being, what do I consider to be a major educational issue of today? And you reflect on that. You're limited on how many words that, how many words you can write. And then you do a page on professional development and community involvement. And then I asked for five letters of recommendation from various people. Jo was one who provided one for me. And you send it into the state, and they say, congratulations, you're moving on to the next level. And then you get the letter that says, I'm sorry. But it's all great. It was really, actually, a very, a very positive process. I really felt like it's a lot of what I would do anyways at the end of a school year and throughout the school year. But it was, it was very worthwhile, some questioning that I maybe don't ask myself so much when it comes to the reflective process at the end of the, end of the year. And it brought forth some questions that were new to me. So, it was, it was, it was very worthwhile.
So, how many questions did they ask?
Two.
There's two?
Two of them.
Two essay things?
Yep, two essay questions and, yeah. So, it was very worthwhile. With that, and then we had a meeting, an EA meeting where I was recognized there. And then I think we have a dinner coming up in May sometime, which is more, a larger thing, a larger, I don't know much about it.
Well, it's a part, it's part of the celebration for that because it is. It's quite an accomplishment to be nominated with...
Yeah, well, and, and, yeah, absolutely. I feel extremely humbled. And actually, I feel there are so many other teachers that are so worthwhile that I wish they could be in, in my shoes as well because it has been a very reflective process and very worthwhile. I am, I'm very humbled.
Your job is challenging in its own way because you take students of all different abilities and age levels and kinda combine them to make a classroom, don't you?
Well, and that's one of the beauties of, one of the things I even said in one of my papers, saying one of the perks to my job is that I get them usually seven through twelve. And I have one group that is seven through eight, seven and eight, and the other which is nine through twelve. And especially when you're talking nine through twelve, and I'm not saying the same doesn't happen at seven and eight, but nine through twelve, you have so many different learning styles, which you do in any classroom. But right now, I have a hundred and fifty kids in that classroom at one time and at all different levels. And you're trying to make sure that you're covering the curriculum, covering the standards, making sure everything is completed so that you have appropriate learning targets and, and growth goals for every single one of them, whether they are, you know, a ninth grader who really struggles or a senior who is really, who really strives to be the star. You, you've gotta make sure that you've got music that covers all of that. You were at our concert last night. We tried to encompass that into all four of our pieces that we did at the senior high level. Our first three were the three that we're gonna take on in about two and a half weeks to large group instrumental contest. And two of those three are actually at a level that could be played by young college bands. The other one, a very good high school band level. And the fourth one that we did, definitely more of a middle high school level because I wanted to make sure that those kids that maybe are gonna really struggle to, to find success in those upper levels, that they have success at, at something that's more doable for them. You've gotta make sure that everything is covered curriculum and standard wise, but you also have to make sure that you have goals and growth targets that are, that are available and achievable by all.
Yeah, because the ninth graders on some of that music, it was very difficult.
It was beautiful and it was wonderful. But if they're already having to play that hard stuff, then where do they go?
Just keep going up, hopefully. We keep increasing that rigor level.
So, then, next year's gonna be even more challenging?
We hope so. And like, like it happens every year, we lose our senior leaders. So, and, and that's, you know, that's the beauty of it too because then the younger kids have to step up and take over. So, it's, it's a wonderful process.
So, how many years have you been teaching in Fairmont?
I think this is my thirteenth.
Thirteen?
Yeah, I think it's the end of my thirteenth year in Fairmont. And I grew up in Fairmont. So, I, I was lucky enough to get to grow up in the band program that I'm directing now and went off to college. I taught a couple of years at a couple other schools in, in the area where I went to school and then got married and came back. And at that point in time, our kids were really young. It was really nice to have the opportunity to stay home with them. So, I opened up my own private music studio in our basement. So, for four years, I taught individual lessons on instruments. And then the high school position opened up and I went, here we go. And I've been there since, and I love it.
Very cool.
Yeah, I love it.
And so, then that means you've been on about how many band trips? Six, seven?
Um, as a teacher?
Yeah.
I think this is my, this summer, we're taking another one. I think this is my fifth.
Fifth one?
As a director.
And where are you going on your band trip this year?
We are going to the east coast, Washington DC, New York, and Boston for ten days from June twenty-seventh through July sixth. And...
So, over the Fourth of July, you're in parades and things.
That is one of the...
Kind of your traditions, isn't it?
Yes. And that is one of the glories of our program because we, we have a comprehensive program where we still have marching band. And, and do we get in depth in March during the summer? No. But we still are able to give our kids a taste of what marching band is like. And that gives us the opportunity to travel during the summer, which is really a benefit to our group, especially, boy, if you pulled a hundred and thirty-one kids out of school, you know, for ten days, that'd be awfully tough on them and the school. So, it's, it's really nice to be able to travel during the, during the summertime. And we typically try to do it, like you said, over the Fourth of July holiday simply because there are a lot of parade opportunities during that time. So, we are actually going to be marching on the Fourth of July in Bristol, Rhode Island. We were there six years ago. My kids came home and called it the death march. And the only reason they called it that...
So, we're going back.
We are going back. The only reason they called it that was by the time we got done marching, it was about a hundred and ten degrees out. We were the only band that day that didn't send anybody to the hospital for dehydration. But it was just a very unusually warm summer in the area. The weatherman was wrong. It was supposed to be about eighty-nine-ish by the time we got done, done marching. Not that that's cool, but, boy, you know, a hundred and ten is a, that was pretty warm. But they did great. They were wonderful. And, and this is a community that is deemed the most patriotic in the United States. The last time we marched there was their hundred and twenty-fifth, which was way fun, way fun. And when we're done marching there, like we did last time, we will be going to the beach for the rest of the day and having a pizza party on the beach and going to see some fireworks nearby. So, I think it will be wonderful.
And then how many parades do you do in the summer?
During the summer?
Leading up to the trip.
Okay, three-week program-ish that, that we do every summer. We normally do about five. Sometimes it's four, sometimes it's six. And sometimes we end up canceling one or two because of weather issue. It's, it just totally depends. But I always try to plan about five. It's a three-week program where we have about twelve rehearsals and five performances. And all of them are as local as Fairmont to Folda, to Mountain Lake, to Springfield.
St. James.
Yep. So, yeah. It's, 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 some of the kids, oh, we're gonna have to get up again and be there at seven-thirty in the morning. And by the time they get there, it just gets them rubbed up for their day. It's so nice because it's kinda like the school year continues, but it doesn't. And you know those kids, because I have two, who do the same thing, that summer's here, yeah, let's sleep until noon. This, they can't do that when they have marching band, which is kinda nice. And most of them then continue their day and they continue to keep themselves busy and active. So, I think it's a great thing to have.
And so, it's Music in Our Schools Month. You wanna just kinda touch on that quickly?
It is nationwide. Music in Our Schools Month, their motto is, let music inspire. And during that month, obviously, and actually, I should say, February's a lot of this too, and so is April, but all of our contests happen around this month. All of our concerts happen around this month. A week ago, we had choir. Last night was band. Tonight is orchestra at seven o'clock in the PAC. And we have our solo ensemble contest. We have our large group contest. Both, and all of that is vocally and instrumentally. We have festivals that run during this time. We've had the Dorian's, the Dorian Orchestra Band and Choir Festivals that we have all attended now. And we will be having our subsection events coming up too. A subsection choir has already happened. Their, their honor choir, that was last week. And subsection instrumental, both orchestra and band, will be happening the evening of April seventh. During that day, we go and compete in front of three judges amongst ten, twelve other bands. It's being held at Grenada Huntley East Chain this year. It's a big day.
Yeah, that is a big day, isn't it?
Yeah, it's great though. Really good opportunity for the kids. So, and it's really great for them to have somebody else in front of them who's judging them, who's directing them, so they get some feedback from somebody else. Sometimes it becomes like mom, if mom says it, you know, it's really not that important sometimes. And when somebody else gets in front of them, they go to contest and, oh, they talked about the articulations and the dynamics, just like Mrs. Collinblock did. It's really nice to hear that because it's just that reiteration and, and, and that trust factor too. Okay, and they, they become a little bit more trustworthy of, of what anybody says, of what their teacher says.
And so, you have one more concert this year?
We do.
In May?
Correct. Thursday, May nineteenth, and that is our Pops and Awards Concert. That's grades five through twelve. Starts at seven o'clock in the PAC. One of the nice things that is happening for this concert is Bruce Abbott's is now able to livestream our concerts, which is a great asset because we should be able to free up another two hundred and fifty seats because we can bring our junior high band and our fifth and sixth grade bands downstairs to the choir and the band rooms, and they can be watching the, the concert that's going on upstairs right on the TVs in our rooms. And we can still do a combined piece at the end. And, but we, at least they can still be engaged and focused in on the concert that's happening at hand. So...
And there's nothing like going to that concert and hearing that live. It's just fabulous. So, you know, and it's free.
It is.
It's free. So, if you need something to do or, it's great entertainment and the kids do fabulous job.
It's so nice to see the growth too, from five through twelve.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you get everybody up there.
Yeah, yeah.
It's great.
So, yep. Well, thank you. We appreciate you doing, all you do for the district. And congratulations on being, becoming the teacher of the year. And Superintendent Brown has a certificate to read.
We're going to give Kate a certificate here that says, we congratulate and commend Kate Collinblock for being selected by her peers as Fairmont Area Schools two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen teacher of the year, more specifically for her dedication to Fairmont's band program and to our young people is recognized and greatly appreciated. Congratulations. We're gonna come over and give a picture to you.
There's a little photo opportunity there, so... And there goes the certificate.
Well, it wasn't the Bruce Lates.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for sharing about teacher of the year too.
You got it. Thank you for inviting me.
All right, while Superintendent Brown comes back, it's his turn. He's on our agenda. So, it's report and calendar.
Okay, first of all, the school calendar, looking ahead, we have a very busy month coming up. First of all, Tuesday, March twenty-ninth at four-thirty in the afternoon, the Policy and Staff Welfare Committee will be meeting in the District Business Office. And we'll be looking at staffing, for the rest of staffing for the sixteen, seventeen school year as well as the next ten policies that we're reviewing. Friday, April first, is Family Fun Fair at Fairmont Elementary from four-thirty to eight o'clock. That's a great time for family and students and staff to get together. That will be held in the elementary school at the two gymnasiums. Monday, April eleventh, is the next Staff Development Curriculum Committee meeting that will be held in the William Budd Room at three forty-five. Wednesday, April thirteenth, that's also a very special day. That's when the ACE area career exploration is going to take place at the high school. We have, I think it's six hundred and eighty students. These are tenth grade students coming from northern Iowa and south central Minnesota that will be in our gymnasium at the high school and will be visiting with a number of local business and industry leaders. And that's a great time for tenth graders to get to know more about what the future is in this region. And then, of course, on February, I'm sorry, Wednesday, April twentieth, is the retirement team. We have a number of teachers retiring this year. That will also be held in the William Budd Room from three-thirty to five o'clock at night. And just a quick update on the student enrollment, it's exactly the same as it was two weeks ago. Seventeen hundred and two students. Looks like we're up one student at the elementary, down one student at the high school. But our enrollment has been very, very steady. If you look in the last four school board meetings, they've ranged from seventeen oh one to seventeen oh two. And so, we have very, very stable enrollment. Once again, we're serving about twenty-five more students right now than we were at this time a year ago. And just the other comment I'll make is that the high school counselors have been busy working with the students that are going into grades nine, ten, eleven, and twelve next year. They're registering them for classes. And sometime by the end of next week, in fact, I think by the time we meet as a staff welfare committee, we'll have some pretty good numbers to look at for the high school. That will dictate, of course, what staffing will look like for the high school next year. So, we're looking forward to those numbers. But this is always a busy time of year. I always think of March Madness has nothing to do with basketball. It has to do with hiring staff for next year and getting students registered for the following year. So, it's a wonderful time to be in school. That's it.
Any questions for Superintendent Brown on his report? All right, thank you very much. Then we'll move to the financial business. And Sue Nelson is here to talk about our financial reports and the bills. Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight on the agenda, we have the wire transfers from March fourth to March, through March seventeenth and the payment of the March twenty-second bills. So, if you can find your wire and transfer list, there's just four listed for this period of time. The first one is we paid our health insurance costs for the month. The next one is we had our P-card payment of nine thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-three cents. And then we'll go through those details here in a minute. RevTrack was the next one, and that's a RevTrack fees from the prior month's transaction. And the last one is we received our pathways dollars, which are our early learning scholarship dollars for that program. And that's for the student scholarships from the prior month. Have any questions on the transfers and wires? Okay, then, if you can find your register that says P-card, this would be the same amount that's on the wire and transfer list. I just had one to bring to your attention. The Best Western plus Kelly N. And that was for four staff members for their lodging when they attended the Viewpoint Conference in St. Cloud. And just to remind you, that Viewpoint is our student testing database. So, teachers and administration can track students through from years to years to see how they're doing. Do you have any questions on the P-card register? And then I can move to the one dated today, March twenty-second. I just have a couple to bring to your attention. Check number fifty-eight, one ninety-four to BFG Supply. And this is for some benches and other equipment needed for the greenhouse. The one just below that to Bet Graphic, that is for the Career Expo brochures. And Carl Perkins pays part of that expense. And then we do bill the chamber for much of that as well. Check number fifty-eight, two hundred, made out to Education Entertainer. This is for perform, two performances for the Family Fun Fair. As Superintendent Brown mentioned, that's being held on April first. Check number fifty-eight, two twenty-four, made out to Minnesota West. And this is for our spring tuition for our students who are taking classes with Midwest. And this is fifty-six students, and they will be earning two hundred and eighty-two credits. And it's just a real wide variety of, of classes as I look through the list. And then the last one. Check number fifty-eight, two forty-four, made out to the Remarkable Reptiles. Again, this is for entertainment for the Family Fun Fair. So, do you have any questions for me on anything? Julie and I did review prior to the board meeting.
If there are no questions for Sue, I'd like to make a motion to approve the wire transfers for March fourth, two thousand sixteen, to March seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, and payment of the March twenty-second, two thousand sixteen bills.
Thank you, Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. I have a motion by Julie, second by Nicole, to approve the financial reports and bills as presented. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Sue. All right, then moving to old business. Last, at our last meeting, we talked about a couple of policies. And Nicole, you wanna refresh and update on that?
Sure. The first one is policy four zero five, the Veterans Preference Policy. It was, at our first reading, proposed that under Roman numeral two, C, sub number three, that that section be deleted because it was deemed to be redundant. And that is the only change to that section, so, or that policy. So, if there's no, I'd like to move to approve the policy four zero five Veterans Preference Policy as amended.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. A motion by Nicole, second by Rufus, to approve policy four oh five Veterans Preference with the changes. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the second policy?
The second policy is regarding graduation requirements. That's policy number five, three, four. And the changes that were proposed last week is under Roman numeral two, A, sub number three, that the number of physical education credits be reduced from two to one and the number of health credits be reduced from two to one, credits being equivalent... number of health credits be reduced from two to one, credits being equivalent to a semester. Also, that the number, total number of electives required for graduation be increased from ten to twelve, making the total graduation required credits of forty-five. That I move to approve, Graduation Policy five-three-four, as presented.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. So, I have a motion by Nicole, second by Rufus, to approve, approve Policy five-thirty-four. Any further discussion or questions on that?
Um, well, I have a couple. Um, I guess I was just curious as the reason for the change, like, as to why we're moving physical education and giving them more electives. Like, what's the reasoning behind that?
I think there's a couple of reasons. Um, the, talking to the mic? I'm sorry, I have to talk in the mic. The, one of the main reasons is that the state is really encouraging, in fact, requiring that we have all students' career in college ready. The state, according to state graduation requirements, there are no PE or health requirements that a school needs to have, and in order to, we felt, we felt that in order to, uh, have our students be career in college ready, that we, they needed to have more opportunities to take classes while they were in high school, to explore those career and those possible col- degrees that they would like to pursue in college. And, um, we heard feedback from a lot of students that they, because there were so many required courses, that they didn't have the opportunity to explore areas that they would like to. And by decreasing the requirements that we had, that the state did not require, um, it allows first students to explore those areas. And the electives was just increased, because we have to have a total of forty-five electus, or forty-five credits.
Credits, are they, if they wanna take physical education or health as an elective?
Yes.
Do they have that option?
Yep, it's still being offered, um, as, there's a health, uh, is there another, is Health eleven? I don't, I have to look at the course catalog that's being presented tonight, but there is a Fit and Well class that will still be offered as an elective, and a PE class that will be offered as an elective.
Right, we did not eliminate any classes, uh, we just eliminated the required class, so students can still take either one of those classes as electives.
Okay.
I just, it just didn't seem very, I don't, I think physical education is very important
for the kids, um, because, I mean, you look at their English and Social Studies and Math and Science, and they really work hard throughout the day and, uh, all those years, and, I mean, one semester of physical education is not very much in four years. And all of our kids aren't in sports and don't get the physical activity. I just think mentally, it's a good thing for them to have a break and have that physical time, and, um, I just, I don't know, I didn't think that a half, or a semester in four years was very much, but...
And they still will have the opportunity, if they want to, to take those classes as an elective. We also looked at the number of students involved in sports, and at the time, when we were looking at this, we had the fall numbers, and over half of the students in the junior, senior high are involved in some sport, fall sport. So, we do have a lot of students that are very active.
So, how does that affect teachers for FIAD and health?
It does not, because of, um, we actually are looking at having some additional health and PE taught at the elementary school. And so, we're still going to have the same number of full-time equivalent PE and health teachers, uh, so, but we are going to have a little more PE and health at the elementary school.
Okay.
Yep. So, they'll be ready to go.
Good questions.
Yep.
Any other questions? Well, I have a motion by Nicole and a second by Rufus to approve the policy as presented. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, then we'll move on to, um, new business. We have the high school course offerings for the, um, school year, and Superintendent Brown, you wanna talk about what's happening there?
I sure will. In your packet, there, there is a very thick, uh, handout of all the courses that are being offered at the high school, and then there is a two-pager that I'm going to highlight. Uh, all the classes that are in here are classes that we have previously offered at the high school, and I wanna highlight for tonight, for the board and for the public's purpose, uh, all the new classes. We've talked about these a little bit in the past, but now they're all set, and the students are registering for them. First of all, uh, this next year, we'll be offering a College in the Schools Ceramics Class that will be taught by the Art Department, and that's, uh, students that successfully complete that class can earn three college credits, and that will be through Minnesota West. We also are offering a Advanced Placement Computer Science Principles Class. This is an introduction to computer coding, and, uh, this will be offered for students in grades ten through twelve. This is a two-se semester class, and, uh, students can earn a weighted grade at the high school for this, it's a, is an Advanced Placement Class, and they can take the Advanced Placement exam after they take the class. The third class is a Human Anatomy, College in the Schools Class. This is also a class, is offered to grades, uh, eleventh and twelfth grade, and, uh, students that successfully complete this course can earn three college credits, and, uh, that's also offered through Minnesota West. And by the way, if you notice, uh, that many of these electives are for the upper-level classes that, in the past, were required to take the Fit and Well class. So, by not having that be a requirement, is why we can open that up, so they can take some more of these electives. On the second page, uh, we're offering a College in the Schools Class called Molecular and Cellular Biology/Genetics. That is also a three-credit, uh, college class that is offered through Minnesota West, taught by our faculty. And, uh, then we have the Advanced Placement World History Class, that's open for grades eleven and twelfth. And then finally, a class called Cadet Teaching, and that is a one-se semester class, open for grades eleven and twelve, and this is a unique class in which students that take this class will spend some time in the classroom, but more importantly, at the high school, but more importantly, they'll be spending, I think, they'll be two days in the classroom of the high school, and then three days in an elementary classroom. And the purpose of Cadet Teaching, and by the way, this idea came from both North and South Carolina, which have had this type of class for many years, it's a way to encourage high school students to strongly consider entering the, uh, teaching profession. And, of course, in Minnesota, right now, we have a teacher shortage, and, uh, it's one way for us to, uh, move ahead on this, and we're pleased tonight that, uh, some of the individual teachers that will be asking the board to approve tonight, uh, one is a former Fairmont grad, uh, one is from, um, Blue Earth, and, um, I forgot where the third one is from.
Wisconsin.
Oh, Wisconsin, but married to somebody who lives in town now and works at Hawkins, so, we're trying to-
Graduated from Fairmont.
Who graduated, yeah, her husband graduated from Fairmont, so we're trying to bring some folks back here. And so, these are the new classes. We're very excited about these new classes. The high school faculty did a great job, uh, reviewing, they surveyed the students to find out what classes that they would like to take that are currently not being offered. But so importantly, uh, you know, Mon- or, Fairmont is very fortunate that we are a comprehensive high school, and that we do offer a number of college credits, so when students leave here, they can have, um, at least one full year, sometimes close to two full years of college, completely done, paid for at no cost to them. And so, that really is gonna help the students as they continue their college career, if that's the path they so choose.
All right, any questions about that?
Yep, I, uh, move to approve the two thousand sixteen-seventeen High School Course Offering Catalog as presented in Appendix C.
Thank you, Nicole, and I'll second that. So, is there any further discussion about the catalog? Has everyone had a chance to review it? Quite lengthy, lots of classes in there for kids to take.
Some look pretty interesting.
Mm-hmm, yeah, they do.
You can always come back.
You can always come back. There's no age limit.
Uh, we'll, we'll make exceptions.
All right, so I have a motion, uh, to accept, to approve the High School Course Offerings for the sixteen-seventeen school year. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is Personnel, and we have some employments that Superintendent Brown alluded to, so, Nicole, would you like to talk about them?
The first item is, uh, Jim, Principal Davison is recommending that Helen Estes be hired as a noon hour aide at Fairmont Elementary. She will work an average of five hours per week. With that, I move to approve the employment of Helen Estes as a noon hour aide effective March sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, at a salary of Step One.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. I have a motion by Nicole, second by Julie, to approve the employment of Helen Estes. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second one?
The second one is, uh, Jim, Principal Davison and Principal Rosen are recommending the employment of Ashley Olson, uh, to our school. Ashley is a two thousand nine graduate at Fairmont High School. She has served as a Behavior Support Interventionist, youth-level head hockey coach, targeted services teacher, math enrichment tutor, summer school teacher, and substitute teacher. She is certified K-six, elementary K-six, and five-through-eight mathematics, and she is willing to obtain her special education license. Uh, she earned a BA from the College of Saint Benedict's on May eleventh, two thousand thirteen, and she holds a Minnesota Teaching License in K-six Elementary and five-eight Mathematics. Um, with that, I move to approve, uh, Ashley Olson as an elementary special education teacher, effective June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, at a ba- salary of BA Step One.
Thank you, is there a second? I'll second it. So, I have a motion by Nicole, second by Diane, to approve the employment of Ashley Olson as an elementary special ed teacher. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The second item, uh, the second, our third person we have, um, from Mr. Davison and Mrs. Rosen, they're recommending that we hire Sarah Warmka as a, uh, she is a graduate of Blue Earth Area High School. She earned a BA from the University of Wisconsin, La Crosse, on December twentieth, two thousand fifteen. She has served as a lifeguard, assistant teacher at the Red Balloon Early Learning Center in Wisconsin, and is a YMCA teacher in La Crosse. She holds a Minnesota Teaching License in K-six Elementary and a B through grade-three Early Childhood Education. Uh, with that, I move to approve the employment of Sarah Warmka as an elementary education teacher, effective June thirty, two thousand sixteen, at a salary of BA Step One.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. So, I have a motion by Nicole, second by Julie, to approve the employment of Sarah Warmka. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next on our list for, that is being recommended, is Kristen Walters. She's a graduate of Mount Horab High School in Wisconsin. She earned a BA from University of Wisconsin, River Falls, on May fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. She holds a Minnesota Teaching License in K-six Elementary Education and a B through grade-three Early Childhood Education. Ms. Walters has served as a substitute teacher in Fairmont Area School District during the current school year. With that, I move to approve the employment of Kristen Walters as an elementary education teacher, effective June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, at a salary of BA Step One.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. I have a motion by Nicole, second by Rufus, to approve the employment of Kristen Walters as an elementary ed teacher. Any further discussion on that item? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, um, we're to Board Committee Reports, and we only have one, and that's the SDCC meeting. Yeah, Nicole?
SDCC met March fourteenth. Uh, there were two major points of discussion. The first was the approval of a calendar from the Calendar Committee, and they will present that calendar to the Policy Curriculum Committee on March twenty-ninth.